Lemmonster School Committee for Monday, October 5th to order. Can everyone please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
This meeting is being recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just.
Okay, I'm going to read our school committee's statement. The committee represents the needs of all Lemmonster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decisions upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemmonster. So at this time, I'm going to open up the public forum. There is a number of people who have signed up to speak. I will be calling them. When I call names, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. Once all the people who have signed up, I will open it up to anybody else in the public who wishes to address the committee. As a reminder, everyone only has two minutes to speak. Our secretary is the timekeeper, and she will let you know if you've come to the end of your allotted time. During public comment, the school committee does not engage or answer any questions. So Mary Cafarella, you are up first. And again, I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. But go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. My name is Mary Cafarella. I live at 4 Prospect Terrace here in Lemmonster. I am a proud parent of two Lemmonster High School students, one being a senior, who has already been accepted to a college for next year, and a sophomore. Both of them are in the band. I implore you tonight to please let these students get back to the high school where they belong. They are doing well, but they need to be in the school. They want to be in the school. I like having them home. I work from home, but they want to be there. I really feel that that is in their best interest. Also, they are both members of the band. They want this band. They want to be there. They want to have fun. And especially the seniors, I feel that they are losing out so much right now, more than last year's senior graduating class. They have not had any of the activities that other seniors have had in the past years or what's going to be happening in the years to come. So once again, please, I implore you to do what you can to have these students back. Also, get the deans back where they belong. And I hope that to heck you have the money to pay for all this. I know that is going to be a big thing, but if you're all adults, you can work this out. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. The next person is Wendy Anderson.
Hi, I'm Wendy Anderson, 104 Harrison Street in Lemmonster. I want to thank everyone at LCE for all the hard work that has been involved with and gone into a mini hybrid model. As usual, the LCE community is a leader in innovation, and I encourage the district to listen to them and find out what worked and what didn't and what discoveries they made about what's needed. I'd like to take a moment to point out that our teachers are not demanding hazard pay. They're demanding the needed funding for staff and equipment to keep our students and themselves safe, and that is not unreasonable. I also want to thank the eight elected members of the school committee for not letting the vitriol and ugliness started and fed by the mayor's behavior leading up to today push you to act before it is safe. Please allow me to apologize for the ridiculous and personal attacks some of you have been targeted with. It seems some of the adults in the city have forgotten that they are the adults and have been behaving in a way that they wouldn't like or allow their children to act. While they are loud, they are a small group and don't speak for me or the majority of the adults in Lemmonster. As we go forward, I encourage you to keep acting in the best interest of students. It isn't easy, but it is right. I hope tonight's presentation addresses and explains to some what many of us already know. Opening even in a hybrid manner requires adequate staff, both teachers and support staff, that the work to run a class in-person and remotely is more work for teachers and not less, and to do it well requires adequate staffing, or none of our students will be getting their needs met. That it requires enough busing and PPE supplies to keep all people, student and staff, safe. This requires funding and cooperation and not these ridiculous and untrue accusations of school department mismanagement. The city under this mayor's leadership must step up. The mayor needs to stop worrying about his precious rainy day fund because, in case you haven't noticed, we are in the midst of a tsunami, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person is Jeff Conway. Jeff Conway, if you're there, please unmute yourself. It's your turn to speak. Okay, having Jeff not come forward, we'll move on to Jen Kifer.
Good evening, Jen Kifer, 104 Center Road, Pittsburgh. Thank you to our school committee for responding to teachers and listening to their concerns throughout this process. Thank you to those members that have responded to my email requesting that you take some time to tour our buildings. Additional gratitude goes to Peter and Brandon for meeting me at Fallbrook this afternoon. The requested tour building is in response to a petition that is circulating to expedite the reopening of our buildings. As a membership, we want to know that everyone is working together as we prepare for the next phase of learning. To move from remote to hybrid, we'll take timelines that take into account space, staffing, and establish protocols. I want to remind everyone that we are in the midst of a pandemic. We are truly building the plane as we fly it. It is starting to seem to me that many are forgetting that education and all that it entails was not immune to the impact of COVID-19. Everything about our profession has been impacted by this virus. My comments this evening are not directed at any one individual or group of individuals. My comments this evening are for anyone that is truly interested in doing what is best for our students while maintaining that it needs to be done safely and with the cooperation of everyone involved in this process. While I understand the benefit of in-person learning, I have become increasingly disappointed in the lack of knowledge those making the most noise actually possess. I ask those of you that have pointed fingers, called city leaders and elected officials' names, utilized disrespect, raised your voices, do you know what it would take to have students return? Have you talked to teachers? Or are you just reacting to your personal situation and are making requests based on your initial reaction? Verbalizing your initial reaction and never taking the time to dialogue with others to determine if there could be a different reaction is malicious. It has been said, teachers are doing a great job. However, teachers are working extremely hard, but please know, when you choose to use however and but, you negate everything you stated before those words. It's time to change the narrative. It's time to change the environment for the students and staff of this city. It's time to show our students what it means to collaborate with those we are at odds with for a greater good. It's time to celebrate the positive things that are happening amidst the chaos that our community is creating. I would encourage all of you listening that have positive moments or thoughts to share.
Your two minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Cohen, you're next.
I'm going to quote my wife on the mayor's thread on Facebook, and she said, "I feel that the mayor and the school committee should defer to the people that they hired to do their jobs, such as our superintendent and the teachers. Anything else at this point will complicate matters unnecessarily. To me, a no vote on this is a vote of no confidence in the person we appointed to be our leader in education, Paula Deacon, and that would be downright shameful. It's a slap in her face when you are telling her, 'Hey, we know you've worked your tail off developing this proposal in pyros consultation and meetings with DESI, the Department of Public Health, other superintendents, and the finest public health experts in the state.' This is a very moderate and modest proposal that optimally, not ideally, addresses the needs of all families, those who demand face-to-face instruction from their children and those who wish to remain on remote schedules of synchronous learning. This is not a time for my way or the highway or for pointing fingers. But first and foremost, this proposal puts children ahead of special interests. I cannot be prouder of the way our superintendent has acquitted herself during these extraordinarily difficult times. She has 100% earned ours and the school committee's unwavering faith and support. Just let her steer the ship through these turbulent waters. Way too many self-appointed captains want their turn at the wheel." Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Caitlin Volpe.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Volpe, 20 Shady Lane, Lemmonster. I want to again thank the teachers for doing a fantastic job with the remote learning for our kids. The amount of patience is astounding, and you are truly making a difficult situation easier. Keep up the great work. What I would like to discuss tonight is acknowledgement. School committee, please acknowledge the time and effort that has been put forth in these meetings by hundreds of parents that want their kids back to in-person learning by listening to them. You're supposed to represent them. If you have been really listening to everyone's stories, then you would actually be feeling our desperation and make a more educated decision based on it when it comes to your voting tonight for hybrid. I, for one, have been pouring my heart out to all of you for weeks, and I do not feel as though I am being listened to, especially with you all walking out of the mayor's special meeting the other night after I just hobbled it in on crutches. Remote learning has been very challenging for our children. Kids need face-to-face time with their teachers in order to really learn. IEPs are being violated daily due to not being in person. My son on an IEP is struggling hard. He actually needed a significant update to his IEP, but I was told today that that would not be possible at this moment due to kids being remote. This is unacceptable, and I feel as though his learning is being put on the back burner. Hybrid is a good start to get our kids back into the building. If this passes, I will be elated, but we need to discuss the presented model further in a future discussion. Let's focus now on the task at hand. Our kids need this. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Volpe is next.
Good evening, everybody. Let me see how out of control this situation's become. We're going to talk about ethics violations tonight by three members. I filed a complaint September 8th and look forward to the results. These three members do not have our city's interest in mind. I, like many other constituents, felt hurt when members walked out of the Monday night's meeting and two others couldn't bear to show their faces. My own ward member wasn't there to meet for the first time and hear what I had to say in person. How urgent was this meeting? You had to rush to a special guest speaker. Who are we? Are we not special, important? The court of public opinion will decide. But during my valuable two minutes, I was distracted by one member texting on the phone. This derailed me, and I couldn't finish what I had to say. I strongly urge this acute school committee to start listening to the people of Lemmonster. We need to get the kids back in two or three weeks, no matter what it takes. Put politics aside, personal beliefs aside, and do what's best for our children. Unfortunately, we have parents against parents now. We have groups making claims without acts or support. The facts, many surveys and petitions have been signed and submitted, the strongly majority of kids, parents, and teachers want to go back to school. The majority. Yes, we are loud, and yes, we'll continue to make noise. I look forward to tonight's discussion about health metrics. I ask you to consider one thing. Will there be a better time than now? The answer is no. Now is the time to rally behind Superintendent Deacon. I encourage everybody to allow her to do her job, steer the ship like Frank said, and get this boat moving. A vote of no tonight is a vote of no confidence. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Bonnie Budd.
Thank you, Eileen. I wanted to share that the CPAC has held two virtual meetings this year in partnership with the Lemmonster Autism Project, Superintendent Deacon, and Fed Director Woodford. For anyone who missed them, the first recording was shared on our Facebook page, and the second one is coming. Many people have questions about their IEPs. You can reach out to your Fed team as a reminder, or the CPAC can help point you to your resources. We have a basic rights and special education workshop with the Federation scheduled for November 4th. A flyer and sign-ups are going out soon. We will soon be hosting our fall CPAC kickoff, where we will seek to add additional volunteer positions to be filled with interested community members. Additionally, I urge you to vote yes on the plan presented by our superintendent this evening. I am thrilled to hear of successful remote learning stories. However, that success is not the same for more than approximately 1,000 students who are on IEPs in this district, in addition to the many students with social and emotional needs. I am not comfortable with even one mental health court being unmet, one student or family member's suicide or attempted suicide on our hands for not allowing in-person learning for those who desperately need it. Note, the yes vote will still leave many IEPs in violation. It does give many students access to some of the services they are entitled to. Reminder, Superintendent Deacon pointed out to several of you at the finance meeting last week, the domino of not supporting the IEPs will result in the district having to spend millions of dollars in a combination of compensatory services, outplacements, and potential lawsuits. Several violations have already been filed by caregivers of students not receiving those services. Additionally, if the plan is not supported, the CPAC will file violations on behalf of those students with DESI. By not allowing students on IEPs to return to their buildings, more than just 165 high need students in mini hybrids, you are essentially cutting off their access to this education. Use the DESI guidance already given to you and rolled out by 75% of other districts. I urge you to please, on those students' behalf, vote yes. Lastly, I hats off to the Fed mini hybrids that--
Your two minutes is up.
Bravo.
Thank you. The next person is Joshua Anderson.
Joshua Anderson, 104 Harrison Street. I'd like to start by saying, the special meeting on, I believe it was last month, this past Monday, was purposefully scheduled in a way that interfered with another event, so the school committee members have every right to either not attend or leave, but that's neither here nor there. I've made my stance on the going back to school and the mayor's response to all of this. I've made my stance on all that very clear. I'm here to remind the people of the school committee that you represent the students of Lemmonster and that the debates that the adults of the city have participated in directly affect us. I urge you to listen to the students and to put their safety above all else. We deserve to be involved in a conversation that involves our education and our health. I urge all students to speak out at this time, and we can't allow our voices to be treated as less than important or as less important. I thank the school committee for their action and their commitment to the health of the students. I can imagine the choices you've made are easy ones, and I commend you for what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve McCahey, you're next.
Good evening. My name is Steve McCahey, and I live in 74 Woodland Road in Holden. I am currently in my 18th year as a teacher at Lemmonster High School, and I am a member of the LA Executive Board. I am speaking to you this evening to express my concerns about the potential switch to the hybrid model, specifically at the high school level. I understand that many people in the community are in support of switching away from the remote-only model that is currently in place, but I want to make sure that everyone on the school committee and in the community understands what they will be getting if we switch to hybrid. In the hybrid model, the time that students receive direct instruction from teachers will be cut in half. There is no other way to slice it. In a hybrid model, teachers will only be teaching the kids that are sitting in front of them that day. At the elementary level, the only face time that students will receive on the remote days is a half-hour check-in each morning. At the high school level, they would not get any time with teachers at all for a full week at a time. At the elementary school level, remote learning might not be working, but at the high school level, that just isn't the case. The consistent message that I am hearing from teachers at the high school is that remote instruction is going surprisingly well. Attendance is high, and participation and engagement are better than expected. Our high school students are currently receiving direct instruction five days a week from their teachers, and they are scheduled to have a 170-day school year. A switch to hybrid would cut the number of remaining days in half. These students already lost out on nearly a half-year of instruction last year. While younger students may have plenty of time to catch up on content that they have missed, the same cannot be said for high school students. In a recent survey, 78% of high school teachers responded that they did not support the hybrid model that is being proposed. The real problem with the hybrid-for-all approach is that it does not acknowledge the difference between a second grader and a high school senior. As school leaders, you need to look at these populations individually and make the choices that are best for both.
Your two minutes is up. Thank you. Sean Green, you're up next.
All right. Good evening. First, I would like to thank the Lemmonster Public Schools, Superintendent Deacon, principals, teachers, aides, janitors, and all supporting staff for going above and beyond for our children. I do ask that you please approve the hybrid model that is being presented tonight. And also, if you could start a plan to get all of LHS back, I have a 10th grader, and she is hoping that they get the opportunity to go back soon. And lastly, to the school committee, I do ask that if you have a personal or political conflict regarding the vote tonight, please abstain from voting. Thank you and have a very great night.
Thank you. We have Lonnie Perry up next.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you for listening to me and hearing the gravity of my concerns. As a parent and a teacher in Lemmonster for past 16 years, I'm absolutely shocked at how much the parents and the staff of Lemmonster students have been kept in the dark. I didn't know until today that my building, which houses around 900 students, is still 300 Chromebooks short. So if forced to go into hybrid, I wouldn't be able to use any technology with my students, but yet I also would not be comfortable to collect and correct any tangible worksheets or papers due to Lemmonster's underfunding and lack of readiness. In fact, we don't have the ability to stream seamlessly with the technology that we do have in the school, which was proven today as our staff returned in person. But we've been told that we, the teachers, can purchase cables and hook up our own computers and personal webcams, and our peers will help us set it all up at some point. How will this work with 900, oh, sorry, 600 more Chromebooks in the school? I didn't know until the first day of school that my classroom windows must be open, even all through the winter, for proper ventilation. And I didn't know until today how incredibly misleading the central office was to state that on Sunday, that students would be safely having at least six feet of social distancing at all times, but just today, Monday, our administration negated that, stating that seats will be spaced as far apart as possible, and anywhere between, and I quote, "three feet and six feet is appropriate." Well, it's not, and it's far from it, and not having enough teachers for cohorts, especially special ed teachers, is absolutely unacceptable. I seriously hope that you consider all of this prior to moving into a hybrid status. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Peters.
Hi, my name is Nikki Peters. I live at 146 Chapman Place in Lemmonster, Massachusetts. My son Alec Wild is in first grade at Fallbrook. The remote learning program is going well for him, and the teachers are doing a fantastic job. While this is not ideal for any family right now, we are in the midst of a pandemic. I have concerns that the remote learning program, as is outlined in the new hybrid model, has not received enough discussion. My immune system unfortunately does not allow for us to send him in for hybrid. We were recently alerted that he will be now assigned a new teacher. It's a lot of change. Once it's safe to go back to school, will he have a third new teacher? He has built a relationship with his teacher and his peers, and that will be taken away from him due to no fault of his own. Kids who go hybrid will lose at least a full day of teacher-led learning under this current plan, which doesn't seem to benefit the hybrid kids either. I understand the need for parents to work, but how will two days in person cover childcare concerns? Perhaps a need-based, five-day-per-week remote learning childcare center for children who would otherwise be left home alone is actually a better option. We are heading into the winter, and COVID cases in Massachusetts are climbing. If you shift to hybrid now, how quickly will you be required to shift back to remote? I feel it makes more sense to stay remote while addressing the individual needs in a remote learning daycare center. If you do vote hybrid, I hope you'll look more closely to ensure that the remote learning program is just as valuable as the hybrid program and that the remote learning program is not an afterthought. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the people who have signed up ahead of time. If anybody else in the public would like to address the committee, you can now please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. Sharon Fashett. Go ahead, Sharon.
Sharon Fashett, 252 Leggett Hill Road, Lemmonster, Mass. First, I want to say thank you to the teachers, staff, and Superintendent Deacon for all the hard work you have done during our remote learning time. My children have done really well with the remote learning model. They have been able to balance their work with the online instruction and are enjoying school. They are relaxed not having to worry about contracting COVID and bringing it home to the family. I prefer having my children home due to underlying health conditions in my family. I have some concerns with going to the hybrid model. If I choose to keep my kids remote, I am concerned that they will have less synchronous learning time with their teachers and their class than the students choosing the hybrid model. Will kids be having synchronous learning time if they choose the remote model? Will they be assigned new teachers and new classes at the middle school and high school levels? Will my eighth grader have one teacher instead of four? Or will the remote learners be grouped in with the remote learners from the hybrid model and therefore be able to keep their same teachers with the cost of having less synchronous learning time? For high school, it seems that the kids could be grouped with the remote kids that week, but then the only synchronous learning time they would ever have would be on Wednesdays. I guess I was hopeful that the hybrid model would incorporate the remote learners with the in-class learners, but I know that brings challenges for the teachers, and I'm not sure we have the staff to accomplish that. Also, if I choose the hybrid model and send my kids to school, they are still getting less in-person learning than they currently are getting with the full remote model. Right now, they are getting five days of instruction. With the hybrid models, they would only get three days a week, or five days a week and one day a week with the AB model. I prefer the five-day-a-week instruction versus the hybrid having remote days with no instruction. What happens if we need to fully shut down? Will we go back to the fully remote model? Does this mean that if my kids have different teachers, they continue with the new teachers or they go back to the old ones? Does it mean going back to the current remote model?
Your two minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone else like to address the committee at this time? We're going to do Matt first and then Vanessa second.
Thank you all for your time. I understand that the hybrid model is good for many people because they need to work. I understand that, and I sympathize with them. My children are stay-at-home. They've been thriving and doing great. I hope that also if you do hybrid, you can still stay at home, and my children can remain with their teachers. On the stance of money, I know money is a big problem, and I see a lot of people. I searched for findmassmoney.com as the state treasury, and I see many people in the community, businesses. The city of Lemmonster is actually owed money. I've tried to tell people at City Hall, "Go get that money." I implore anybody listening to search themselves and maybe donate to the schools if there's a possibility, how to do that. Even people not with us anymore, people who have died, still have money waiting for them. If you're a defendant, you can get that and donate to the schools. Schools need it. When someone said they're going to have the windows open in the winter, who's going to pay that heating bill? That's even more money. Money's a big problem. We can go get it, help the schools, help the children, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Vanessa, you're next.
Hi there. As you can see, I'm still at work. It's Monday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and that's 7:00 PM is being generous. We usually have to wrap things up after our shift. And my first grader is home with my mom, who is also watching three other children, two that are younger than him. There's no way she can sit down with him. So my concern is that I know that he's not paying attention to the teacher, that he is fidgety, that he is getting up, and he needs adult supervision with his learning activities to see where he is at in his learning. I didn't, you know, write a whole speech today because I was trying to make it here on time, but I also wanted to give a voice to the kids again that are in abusive households, in homes where they haven't heard a good job, nice work in over six months, and have no food. I mean, we have the pickup, the food pickup available, but if, you know, your parent is nodding out because they're high on drugs or an alcoholic or don't have the means to go to the school to pick up the food, there's still, there's no food for these kids. The school was their safe haven. I'm a voice for the kids that are in abusive households being neglected, and switching teachers is the least of their worries. They just want a teacher. If you're switching teachers, if you have a different teacher, that's the least of our worries right now. So I would please consider hybrid is a start, and hopefully our numbers will be beautiful and everybody will be happy and healthy, and our kids need support. And I am happy to take care of these patients that are going through these, through what we're going, you know, this pandemic, but I also don't like feeling guilty because I'm leaving my kids when they need me to. So thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee?
Catherine Gabriel.
Go ahead, Catherine.
Yes, thank you. As another example of the miscommunication that happened, I actually did include in my email the request to speak at tonight's meeting and was not added to the list, but I wanted to speak. I'm Catherine Gabriel. I'm at 111 Milk Street in Pittsburgh, but my daughter is in Lemmonster at Skyview Middle School, having moved up since she was in the LEAP program at Francis Drake Elementary School. We're now still in question as to whether or not she will be in the LEAP program, if there really is a LEAP program. I'm not really sure, and that's just one of the many uncertainties that are happening. And I feel like a lot of that uncertainty is happening because of-- And I feel like a lot of that uncertainty is happening because of some poor communication that happens amongst adults who are trying their best, and we all try our best, but when we can't communicate with each other, people make assumptions, and those assumptions have been causing problems for each of us. So for my daughter, a lot of that difficulty is when she goes to school on a Friday at Skyview. It's called a free-form Friday, which means no one knows what her school day is supposed to look like. And with me having to work full-time and she's at her grandparents' house so that we could pretend she's having a school day to leave the house every morning with her backpack on and go to a school desk in her grandparents' office and have a school day, she has no clue really what her day should look like. I am deeply concerned when I see a hybrid schedule of two more uncertain set-aside days that will be up to my eleven-year-old to self-discipline or be disciplined by her grandparents, who want to give her extra candy generally and be grandparents. So my deep concern is that her emotional learning, her social learning, her disciplinary learning, her development as an adolescent going into middle school cannot be self-managed when online learning is happening in a self-disciplined way. So communication and clear expectation is the only way she can get into a structure to be expected to sit for the entire day, have her camera on when she's supposed to have-
Your two minutes is up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee at this time?
Karen Olzniak.
It would be Denise and then Larry is second.
Thank you. My name is Denise Olzniak. I live at one sixty-five San Sett Drive, and I wanted to speak on the remote learning plan. My youngest child is a senior and, like many others, is struggling with the fully remote model. This is a child who had never wanted to go to school and now is actually wishing that he could. Honestly, when the remote model was voted on, I was in favor of it for health and safety reasons. However, as an administrator in another district that has gone back in a hybrid model, I have seen that it can be done and be done safely. Our students are able to be in school two days a week and follow all safety protocols, including all students from kindergarten up wearing masks with no issues. But in order for that to happen, we have increased our staff, not decreased it. The district has hired extra staff, purchased PPE, Chromebook supplies, all with money received from the CARES Act. It concerns me that the opposite seems to be the case in Leominster. How can Leominster be expected to return to a hybrid model when there are not funds being made available to support it? The city should be stepping up to provide whatever funding is necessary, as the global pandemic constitutes an emergency. It is my hope that Leominster will return in a hybrid model sooner rather than later and that the schools will be fully staffed so that it can be done safely. I'd also like to mention that I was extremely disappointed listening to the last few school committee meetings. The disrespect I have heard is the direct opposite of your own mission statement that is read at every meeting to exercise leadership and adhere to protocols. And finally, I want to give a big shout out to the teachers and administration at Leominster High School for the hard work they've put into trying to make the remote model successful and productive. Once again, it's the teachers who are stepping up and leading the way while at the same time being the most disrespected by a certain member of this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry, you're next. Thank you for being patient.
Good evening. I'm sorry about that. My name's Larry Zorah. I live at Apron Wood Drive in Leominster, and thank you so much for your time tonight. And I know you guys are all dealing with a very difficult, a difficult road ahead, and it's not going to get easier. As Mrs. Olzniak just said, the reason I'm really calling is not so much about, I'm fine with whatever plan you decide on. What I'm not fine with is I've been watching these meetings, and the behavior is absolutely disgraceful. You should be ashamed. I think some people on this committee have forgotten the purpose of this committee and asked to help the students of Leominster. It's not about to make myself look good, and it should certainly not be about running my mouth on Facebook and, you know, making it look like, you know, it's like committee member against committee member. It's about working together for what's best for our kids. Okay? And I hope you remember that. I also, we also got that email today or over the weekend about the students who may be switched out of their current homeroom teachers. I don't think that's in the best interest, especially in the younger grades. My son, Michael, who's in second grade with Ms. Quokkinen, who's an excellent teacher, and she's been doing a wonderful job. Michael's been having a great year so far, and I just hope that the switching can be limited. Of course, if it's done, of course, Michael will be fine, and he will deal with it, and he'll be okay. But I just hope that, you know, I hope there's enough staff where that doesn't have to happen. I'm also concerned that, you know, as a music teacher of seventeen years in the district, right now, my son is telling me about recorded specials. That is a very concerning thing. How are kids supposed to have any, develop any love of that or have any of those specials, especially from some of those teachers who are the hardest workers? Especially when the city calls upon the music department to, you know, perform at all these events, and now they don't even get the decency to have a live, a live lesson with these students right now. I know if that was my case, I would never become a music teacher if I had a recorded lesson.
Your two minutes is up.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee?
Yes, please. My name is Linnea Romhany. I live at eleven Grove Terrace in Leominster. I must reiterate the sentiments of Ms. Olzniak and Mr. Zorah. I am a art teacher at the high school. I am devastated by the fact that our specials have been cut. When we get to the high school level, they will not have the background necessary to support them and know what they need to know. We have students that have gone through and are in the leading art schools and other arts schools of this nation, and the fact that they've been cut reflects very poorly on us, especially when the city regards them as the pride of the city through art shows, through performances of the band, of the theater. These children need us, especially in these times. And the fact that so many arts teachers have been laid off, and I include music, theater, and I include physical education, they've been laid off, and now it's pitted teachers against teachers. If we have so much money that we can go off and rent space at other facilities, I am at a loss to understand why we cannot rehire teachers and have the staff in front of the children, dealing with the children that need to be dealt with. We should be fully in front of those children as much as any academic teacher. So I beg and plead that if we have enough money to rent space, if we have enough money to overfund our retirement in this city, why can we not fund our schools adequately, beyond adequately, especially in this situation? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee?
Yes, please. Patty DiAmetris.
Go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Patty DiAmetris. I live at ninety-one Jordan's Way. I have four children, two of which have graduated from Leominster Public Schools, and I have twins who are now seniors at the high school. I also work in the district as an elementary-level para. While I may not agree with every decision or every vote, I would like to sincerely thank the school committee for the time, energy, and effort that they devote to this community. It is truly appreciated. I am not sure what the best answer is to this unprecedented decision that is before us as a district. While my own children are doing very well with remote learning, and I'm pretty sure they're going to prefer to stay remote, I understand that isn't a scenario for every family. I have leaned in both remote and hybrid directions, both before and since we have started school. The scenarios seem to keep changing, as we all know. I can tell you that our primary focus in school these first few weeks has been all about making those connections and building those relationships with the kiddos. I am in awe of the people I work with. Their creativity, dedication, and love for their students is undeniable. The kids are missed in the classroom, really, but the possibility of students who stay fully remote with a hybrid model having to change their teacher is worrisome, as is what seems like a decrease in instructive learning. Remote has been challenging and tiring to figure it all out, but every day is better than the day before, and there have been unexpected moments of excitement and fun. I truly feel for parents with work schedules and who are trying their best to support multiple children remote learning at home. We see you, literally, we see you, and appreciate how hard this is for you, too. Is it possible, rather than hybrid with the option of remote, to consider remote with the option of hybrid at a learning center that the mayor discussed setting up? What I'm most bothered by is the prospect of our district being bullied into a decision based on the shameful behavior by the mayor last week and that it should be taken for what it was, staged optics with a preset and strategic self-serving agenda that only promoted further division in our community, which we don't need.
Your comment is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee?
Karen Olzniak.
Go right ahead.
My name is Karen Olzniak. I live at one oh eight Jordan's Way. When I was a waitress, I remember a manager saying that if a customer has a good experience, they would tell one or two people. However, if they had a bad meal or experience, they would tell eight to ten. I feel like that is happening when it comes to our fully remote learning model. I believe that the parents and caregivers that would like the all-remote learning to continue are not voicing our opinions as often and as strenuously as those pushing for the hybrid learning model. My daughter is a fourth grader at JA. She's very smart and extremely social. She misses seeing her friends every day. She misses connecting with her teachers. She loves JA. We love JA. My heart is sad that she can't be there. However, with the fully remote learning model, she is thriving. She is actively engaged with her teachers and classmates Monday through Thursday for all but forty-five minutes when she has lunch and specials. I fear that if we push to the hybrid model too quickly, her learning will be slowed down and negatively affected. With the hybrid model, she will only have two days of being fully engaged. I fear the other three days, she will be just stuck sitting in front of a monitor, not being challenged, and not moving forward with her learning. As much as I want my daughter back in school, the want is not outweighed by the realities of the situation. Our teachers and school staff are performing miracles. A push too soon to hybrid, when the buildings aren't safe and we are understaffed, will only underserve our children and put the teachers and staff at risk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the committee? A second time, if anybody would like to address the committee, now is the time to unmute yourself and state your name and address. One final and last time, if anybody in the community would like to address the committee, please do so at this time.
Hi, Elaine. My name's Greg Thomas. I live at three ten Leggett Hill Road. I'd like to take a minute just to kind of end this conversation as much as possible here. I think there's a lack of understanding from some of the teachers as far as how accounting is practiced in budgetary planning, and I think there needs to be some clear transparency as far as some of these numbers go and what we actually truly need in the case of staffing, in the case of PPE. I have yet to hear that, and I think we're, hopefully, will outline some of that tonight. You know, one of the things that I'm, I'm a very metrics-driven person, and what we see in Massachusetts' metrics as far as higher education testing is the positive test rate has been going down since the beginning of the school year. The testing rate has gone up, positive test is going down. The statistics are out there. Anybody can go to the mass.gov website and get that information available to them. I will say that, you know, from a perspective of remote learning, as Mayor Mazurel has pointed out, that there are a lot of parents out there that are working hard. They don't have money for childcare to have their child go and have support, or they don't have a family member. They're out there serving you when you go out to dinner, when you go and get your food, when you go shopping for your kids. Think about them, and remember that, you know, we're only as strong as our weakest child right now, and if they're struggling, we are all struggling. We need to think about them, not just our strongest, okay? And I want, and I just, I ask that everybody think about that tonight before they vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee? One final last time, would anybody else like to address the committee? Please do so now. With no one else coming forward, we're going to close this portion of our meeting, and we're going to move on to communications. Superintendent?
There are no communications this evening.
Thank you. We'll go right into the superintendent's report.
Good. I just, I'd like to push that forward with the presentation.
Go ahead.
So this evening, the most popular question that I've heard over the last few weeks is, so what's happening in the Leominster School Department? I want to thank everyone who has sent me an email, who has made a phone call, who has supported or questioned us, has been a creative thinker, and most importantly, we've had solution soldiers come forward and help with the decision-making, because as you've heard already, this is not an easy problem to solve. And we need to take care of our community as a community and as a united front. Being devices doesn't help any of this, and we have families that need us. And so we have been preparing and making sure that all of our structures, all of our resources, our communications, from the largest items to the smallest detail, are in check. These are very typical procedures in the best of times, but we're in the worst of times. So we are twenty-four-seven in ensuring what we have and how to move forward. We also have been phasing in students in a very safe, responsible manner with constant monitoring. CTI students, LCE students, kindergarten screenings, they're all in place. This morning, our sub-separate programs began, and students with a confidence and a happiness, they got off buses, they got out of vans, they got out of cars, and they just marched right into the buildings. They were children. We know that kindergarten and our ELL newcomers are starting on October ninth. Our sports are ongoing. So we continue to assess and we adapt our staffing levels and our materials according to what our programs need, what our students need. We meet with our teacher teams regarding every step along the way and determine what will work at the individual levels. And I am going to say this over and over, nothing is perfect. We're trying to make the best of a horrible situation, but our teachers have been absolutely tremendous. Our remote plan is better than anything I've ever seen. I asked all of our staff to give two-hundred percent, and they have gone above and beyond. They've helped us with scheduling. They've helped us with safety teams. You name it. They know how to get learning to happen. So tonight, the plans that we have in place, we have switched it up again. So this is plan number five. We've written another book. And questions around why did we switch our model from July thirtieth to now, our pre-K to eight, we are looking at a two-one-two model, and we've been assessing what has been happening. We're worried about our youngest learners. In an A/B model, students would be away from staff for nine days in a row. That's not community building. That's not what our students need. We have noticed that the social-emotional learning, having their friends all together, that's what we're about. Equity has been one of our guiding principles throughout this whole time, and providing continuity for children, that's what matters. So with a choice between remote and hybrid, that's about reflecting our students' needs. So the staffing, there may have to be some changes because it is a change in model. We will make sure that everyone has a certified, engaging teacher. We may not have to do that. I really need parents to answer the survey that went out last week, and I understand you had minimal information, because a piece of paper doesn't explain all the ins and outs of these programs. But we need to know how many students will be in and how many students will be home so that we can make the most accurate decisions possible. It will not be a single classroom over an average of sixteen students per teacher, and sixteen is really the extent. That is the largest limit that we have. I would love to stick to at least a six-foot distancing, and if we have to move classrooms, we'll move classrooms. Safety is the priority. Currently, we have kept all class sizes to the school committee recommendations, so if we have to have half students in and half students out, we can stay within the guidance protocol given to us, because those have not adjusted since. We continue to support in-person learning. We know at some point that that is the ultimate goal, to have all of our students in front of us. But if we can't have one-hundred percent, we need to make this work for the students of Leominster, whatever it takes. As a community, we know we can do this. The remote learning plan, we've had ninety-eight percent attendance rates. The lessons have been outstanding. We know we can do this, but it takes- But it takes talented teachers. It takes our talented staff, and it takes a confidence. And I actually just spoke with a parent on Sunday and I said, I need people to trust what the school department is doing. We are not setting anyone up to fail. And whatever it takes to make sure that our students are successful, I will put in place. Lastly, I will be asking for two votes this evening. I know that the plan states, the will of the committee wanted me to bring forward a plan for second quarter, which is November 9th. But during our research and what we have been working on through the mini hybrids, another high-needs group has really surfaced. And this has come from our parents and our staff. I want parents to know first and foremost, we are listening. We are paying attention. And staff, we hear you. So this evening, the second vote will be to ask the school committee to accelerate the hybrid plan for all our elementary students, pre-K through five. Our youngest customers need us and they need us in person. Our teachers need their students in front of them. So however we can do that, as quickly as we can do that, October 6th is our timeline and we feel confident that we can make a safe return at that point. This evening, you're going to hear from all departments, and I would ask that you just hold your questions till we get through this. And just know that our goal is always to get us back whole. And someday, we're going to be there, but today, we're dealing with the circumstances in front of us. And so we're giving families a choice. I will never take remote learning away. We have hybrid. I do ask that families trust and move with us, but we will support you, whatever your choice is. So again, I will be asking for two votes this evening to accept a full hybrid as of November 9th and to accelerate a mini hybrid for all elementary students as of October 26th. I'd like to turn this program over to Lorene Zupola for yet another overview.
Thank you, Superintendent Deacon. Good evening again, everyone. Yes, we have another plan in front of you with some additional details. The plan does include information on full remote, full return, and a proposed hybrid learning model. And because that's what was on our radar for November, we have added a good amount of detail to the hybrid model that we'd like to discuss with you tonight. Before we get to that piece, on the very first page of our plan, we have health metrics. We have been working closely with the Department of Public Health. We are lucky to have a nurse leader in the district who will continue to integrate with the local public health and the state public health department to provide Superintendent Deacon with up-to-date daily information about the metrics that she will then in turn provide to the school committee. That may not have been the case back in July when we were first discussing our proposed hybrid learning model, but we have added a variety of those metrics to your packet. And certainly, Ms. Gardette would be happy to discuss those with you further at another meeting. So I'm just going to start the conversation with the 2-1-2 model that we're discussing for our K, pre-K through eight students. Some big picture pieces of this. It is a model that's going to provide both direct instruction and independent learning. We really do believe that this will allow all of our children to have opportunities for content mastery, for skill development, and for practice. Are we going to ask teachers to change things up a little? Yes, we are. So we are looking to restructure our teaching and learning time. Those times that they will be in person, two days a week with children, will be for new learning. That will be for content mastery. The skill and practice, the review and enrichment will be for the times when the students are on their own with very specific interactions with their teachers. So two days a week, based on the last names in most cases, but that certainly can be tweaked, the students will be face-to-face in small class sizes. And we know our teachers are going to take great advantage of that. On Wednesdays, all students will return to the remote learning that we're seeing in place right now. And as you've heard from teachers and from parents and from Superintendent Deacon, this remote learning really is working, and that will continue on Wednesdays. The other two days of the week, they will, all of our students will have opportunities to interact with their teachers at some point during the day, but that will be for more independent work, especially at the middle school level where we think our students are able to do independent work if they are guided. I would like to also say that we know this is a work in progress and we are still looking for feedback. If you provide us a vote tonight that asks us to move forward with this hybrid model, we will have a few weeks in order to continue to get information from teachers and from parents and from students and from our staff. And we will put this out as a great hybrid model that will rival the remote models that our teachers have already put out for you. I'm going to ask Renee Costa to just step in and give you some details about what the elementary model would look like.
Good evening. Thank you for the chance to talk about the elementary model for hybrid. We are excited about starting our elementary hybrid. Our teachers and our students are clearly excited to see their teacher in person. As you look at the calendar, the draft of the example of the cohort, there are two fa, if I look at the first two days of in-person learning, the key factors of this will be teachers who have eight to 12 students in front of them for all content area instruction. Includes ELA, math, writing, social studies, and science. They'll have time to collaborate with their colleagues involved to make sure that we are meeting the needs of individual students. They will receive their specialized instruction as needed, face-to-face with appropriate modifications and materials that they need to be successful. They'll be able to send home work on those two days for our Thursday and Friday for students to do some written work and some practice with skills and not be on a computer all day long. They'll have breakfast and lunch, and they'll have math breaks and movement breaks along with those two days. The important key here for those two days of in-person is our teachers being able to work with a small group of students each day to be able to teach content and make sure that there is mastery to that content as they move forward. I'll move on to Thursday and Friday where it is our remote days for the students of that week. Students will meet with their teachers in the beginning of the day for the first 30 to 45 minutes where teachers will be able to review, ask questions, and if needed, ensure that students are prepared for this remote learning time. They will also receive a check-in at the teacher's discretion during the afternoon. Students will have a combination of skill and practice, the paper and pencil, as well as independent work and other activities on the computer to practice their skills and practice. Symphony and Lexia are some of the activities that we do at the elementary level. But there's also lots of enrichment activities that teachers have put onto their websites and their Google sites, which will also endure some time with students to spend. On Wednesday, it will be synchronized and asynchronous. We'll do a check-in as we always do with all the students remotely. They will do mini lessons for ELA and math and work with students on some of the materials they've gone over or some of the materials they're going to receive. They will have time to work independently on their Lexia and Symphony as needed. In the afternoon, after lunch and specialist, they will still have their project-based learning, their teacher check-in time, and anything that they need to be successful as they move forward through the week. This is what the elementary cohort schedule would look like moving forward.
Well, I want to try one of these dried strawberries.
So we're going to go on to the middle school and give you just a snapshot of what the middle school hybrid would look like. It will mirror the elementary in that, again, it will be two days in person, two days with remote, and one day that would look like our current remote looks. So the in-person model will have blocks. There are four content blocks, plus there would be a block that would include their special and their lunch and a movement break. The teachers, again, would have anywhere up to 12 to 15 students at the most in front of them. Many of them would have around 10 students per class, which will give them a tremendous opportunity for individual and small group work in all of the new learning that we're looking for them to present. There would be asynchronous, which means face-to-face walk at the beginning of every day and at the end of every day for all of the students. So there would be time at the beginning of the day where the students from that class that they are used to would be in their homeroom together. That will mirror what is in place right now. We are also looking to use time at the end of the day for more subject-specific synchronous time, and we're looking to ask our teachers to help us figure that out as we're moving forward before we actually implement the hybrid model. So again, it looks pretty much the same as the elementary. They would have their in-person time. Just, I'd like you to picture that last time of the day on their in-person day, they would be reminded, as we need to remind all 13, 14-year-olds, to bring home the work that they're going to be asked to do, to ask clarifying questions about that work. And then they would be bringing home low tech. Ms. Costa mentioned low tech, and we had heard loud and clear from people that screen time is a concern. So low tech and screen time and project-based learning that they would be doing on their remote independent days. I'm going to ask Steve Dobinski to give us a little bit of a snapshot of what we would be thinking about at Lemonster High School. Steve?
Thanks, Lorene. I appreciate that, and thank you for everyone's patience tonight as we kind of maneuver our way through. Right now, the cohort that we're hoping to bring back would be our grade nine. And for, I just need to prepare everybody. It's a little bit confusing because we can't go on a 2-1-2 schedule at the high school because of our CTI program. So I want to just say right off the bat that we are not changing our CTI schedule whatsoever. Those kids will still remain in the hybrid model that you voted upon and is working now. We're three weeks in now to our hybrids, and it's been going very, very well. So I just want to thank everybody for that. If you look at your screen, the first one we will talk about is when our CTI students are not in place, okay? So our regular students will go through our A through L, M through Z. That's, we've looked at that breakdown and it's pretty even. Couple outliers, and we can change that a little bit, but we'll be okay. So from, if you look, all of our students will be arriving. Okay, so I guess we have the in-person, the 7:30. Let me just clarify. In the week that our CTI students will be arriving, those CTI students will be arriving at 7:30. They will be in their vocational shops, their exploratory, from 7:30 to 9:30. That won't change, okay? Our other students, who are our non-vocational students, will be arriving for their 8:45 class. They will take a regular typical school day, 8:45 to 2:35. For our vocational students that are in their exploratory from 7:30 to 9:30, at 9:30, they will just simply walk from the vocational school up, from CTI up to Lemonster High School. Some of those students will be getting on a bus and going home because it is not their week to be here, and some will just simply be coming to the high school. So that first period of the day, as you can see, that's their exploratory from 7:30 to 9:30, or other students are already here. Once they arrive at the high school, they follow the regular school day as we would see it fit. So they would take period one, period two, period three, period four, and period five. If you look at C Block, we have added a fifth lunch period. We always have had four lunches. We actually looked at the end of the road, hoping that we could all be here at some point. So we thought this year, we would add a fifth lunch for social distancing, for fewer kids in the cafeteria, for fewer kids transitioning during the hallways at that time. And so we were able to pull that off. That is the most difficult week, to be honest with you, with students that are in CTI. So at the end of their hybrid, that's currently going on right now from 7:30 to 9:30, some of those students will go home and some will remain here. That is just simply, we cannot go a 2-1-2 because, quite frankly, our seniors and juniors are already in an A-week, B-week schedule. So to overlay a 2-1-2 on top of an A-week, B-week just was nearly impossible. And I need to thank Danny Bayshant, Laura Van Doren, David Bayshant, Michelle Oliveri, Rusty Sa, and over the summer, TJ Noviello for creating this schedule because it really has taken a lot of meetings and time. And I just need to thank the administrative staff up here in the union for working with us to get through this. So that's really the week of students, of time when they're in CTI. Those students on the off week, when they're not in CTI, and if they are in the M through Z, for instance, and are coming to school, they simply get off the bus at 8:30, 8:45, and off we go the first period, and it's a very easy transition. So the one thing I did want to speak about was the Wednesday. You know, it's the midweek point and it's going to be full remote for cleaning purposes within the building. I don't really want to handcuff the teacher. Half our students would be in school that week and others, the other half would be learning remotely that week. I think it's a great opportunity to bring the full class together if we wanted to do that during that week, if you wanted to have extra help sessions, if you needed an exam period for the entire class. I don't really want to tell the classroom teacher what to do on that Wednesday. I think it would really be free and open. You know, I just use this example, a math teacher may have two separate 15 group cohorts that might be in different places because of the A-week, B-week, and that Wednesday might just be for the class that they have in session at that point. As a former social studies teacher, last Wednesday would have been fantastic. I would have had the entire class in. The assignment the night before would have been to watch the presidential debate, and we could have had a heck of a class discussion with all 30, 28, 30 kids having that discussion. So I think it's really, we're going to leave that up to the classroom teacher to plan what is needed for their classroom on that Wednesday. It looks a little bit more complicated because of the CTI, but it's really not. And so I will entertain any questions at the end of this. It's very doable and very, could be very successful.
Thanks, Steve. I do want to also say the other micro-hybrids that are in place in addition to CTEI will be continuing as they have been put in place so that some separate children and our Ls and children and our LCE will continue on with the micro-hybrid that they are doing. Kim Woodford would just like to explain to you some of the micro-hybrids that are in place and that will continue. So I'm just going to have Kim come on.
Hey, hello, everyone. As you heard earlier, we started our micro-hybrids today. It was quite joyful to see all those students coming in. Teachers really welcomed them with, you know, festive T-shirts. Some of the walkways were decorated with balloons and streamers. There were banners. It was a very joyful day. So I feel like my chart is very overwhelming because as you can imagine, we have to think about so many different scenarios and so many different students and their needs. I do feel like this micro-hybrid has been a great way for us to start thinking about how we're going to go to full hybrid. When we think about our students and the changes for them around wearing masks and the social distancing, taking breaks, traveling through the school, PPE, it's very overwhelming. This is going to be a great opportunity for us to slowly introduce them to some of the different ways their classroom might look. So as we look at the full hybrid, obviously, we're looking for more ways to increase students' face-to-face time. I think that it looks different for different classrooms because we also are trying to be very mindful of the school schedule. For some students, it could really, like our resource room classrooms, when we really looked at their schedules, we wanted to make sure that we were honoring those opportunities for those students to be able to access their hybrid part of their schedule and also to be able to have those face-to-face times. We are looking We are looking very closely, making data-driven decisions, to identify students in those classrooms who may need more face-to-face time. It's going to be different for different students. It's going to be an ongoing thing. We're looking at, teachers are doing a great job collecting some data and classwork and work samples for us to be able to understand what students are going to be the best to introduce first. But as time goes on, I'm sure we may be identifying other students. I think our biggest challenge has been looking at our Francis Strait program and our ABA program. Those are students who have behavior plans, students who focus on not just academics, but they're also focusing on daily living skills. And so those are the students who have our highest needs. Teachers really advocated for wanting those students to be in front of them for four days a week. We had, and we welcome, the new families that have moved to Lemonster. We had five new students who are joining our ABA classrooms. And so there's really a need to kind of grow, continue to grow that program. So the cabinet has worked with me to identify how we can increase the amount of staff for those programs. We have posted some ABA teaching positions. We actually have had people applying. We're starting some interviews this week. As we hire those teachers, that will be the program that we will look at growing. Right now, the students are going to be in two cohorts, with a morning and an afternoon group, so that we can get them in for the four days. But the plan is going to be to be able to get those students in for four full days. I hope, we would love to be able to say that, you know, by November that that will happen. So we're certainly working hard towards that goal.
So. Yep, I think, Ken, that's a good segue, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Overall, we are looking, based on this hybrid model and decisions that need to be made about our staffing, we're looking to add an additional 17 teachers. They include the ABAs that Paula, I mean, that Kim had talked about, excuse me, as well as some virtual content specialists to support what will need to be done to maintain both our remote learning and our hybrid model, and a couple of grade-level teachers at the elementary level where we would not be able to do a 15 to 1 ratio. So we're looking to add those. That list is in the packet for the school committee. The other piece that we are looking to hire as part of our guiding principles, certainly the safety and well-being of the students, families, and staff. We're looking to hire duty aides across all of the schools to support safety of our children and custodians that will be supporting the safety of our students and of our staff. So that's a component that you've seen. Superintendent Deacon had mentioned many times that as we need to roll out additional hires, we will do that thoughtfully. And this is the plan for full hybrid that's part of your package. Again, a reminder that we are going to be adding programming, that we are not taking any programming away at this time, so that all of the micro-hybrids that have thoughtfully been put in place, excuse me, will continue for our Ls, for our sub-separates, for CTEI, for LCE. And we will be doing a rollout thoughtfully of our kindergarten, so they will be in our schools, as Kim had made a good point. Our students that are at risk, including the kindergartners, need a little bit of time to learn how to navigate the school and do that with their safety and their student, the other students' safety and those masks in place. We are looking forward to working with the teachers to learn how to restructure their learning to those two face-to-face days with much smaller class sizes. I think that at that, I will turn it over, turn it back over to Superintendent Deacon. Thank you all for your time.
Honestly, thank you to my team. This has, this has been, I want to say a labor of love, but I'm just going to hold on to the labor part. We've been seven days a week in trying to incorporate all parties to make the best decision in a horrible situation for the students of Lemonster. I ask, before the vote, that we have a unified approach in making these decisions and supporting the children and the staff of Lemonster. This is difficult enough without having divisiveness in our district. We need your support. We need everyone's support, whatever level people are at, from our families, from our staff, from every official. This is really difficult work. And so tonight, I am asking for a vote to accept the hybrid model for a quarter to for the full hybrid for all students on November 9. I'm also asking for the vote tonight to accelerate the elementary hybrid for October 26. These truly are in the best interest of the students of Lemonster. And I thank you for your time and attention. And if there are questions, the team is ready to respond.
Thank you, everyone. Nice presentation. I'm going to call people individually to see if you have any questions. Ron, I'll start with you first.
No, it was a very good presentation. I, I, it was all very well explained. I thank both Laureen and Paula and I forget that little lady's name. Against K O S, K O S T K A, can't remember her first name.
Kim?
Not Kim.
Renee.
Renee, yeah, yeah. And Kim, they really, really did a good explanation of everything. I'm happy.
All right, thank you, Ron. Sue?
Sure, no, I agree. I thought the presentation was well done. Paula, just for clarification, I know we know it, but, you know, for the benefit of the public. So if we vote for the hybrid, you are still offering remote.
I am.
And that's really important because our vote will not change, you know, the, the remote people who are happy with what they're getting right now. The only thing it will change is that the teachers that they currently have will not be the same.
May.
May not be the same.
That's why, that's why it's imperative that our families answer that survey as soon as possible, so we know who's in and who's out, because we have some creative thinking around that. So we just need to know what the numbers are. But yes, you are right.
Okay, and you've given the families a specific deadline on the survey?
We're asking by the end of this week because we need to set up transportation, and that takes a while.
Okay, okay. So just make sure it's.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Isabel?
Sorry, I was writing that down. That was one of my questions as well. I do think the presentation was fairly comprehensive. I did have questions about the hybrid model at the high school level only because the CTI piece was a little confusing for me to follow. I do have two quick questions. The first is with the acceleration of the hybrid model for grades pre-K to 5, that's starting, you're recommending October 26.
Yes, I just spoke before, I said 6, then 26.
You did, and that freaked me out a little bit because that's tomorrow. So, yeah, was not ready for that, was not prepared for you to say the 6. 26, for those listening carefully. Why that sudden acceleration, I guess? And are our buildings going to be ready in 20 days for that?
Yes, so we have, it's all hands-on debt. And we've been talking to maintenance. We have Mr. Nato, our new facilities director. So he has been charged with making sure those buildings are ready to go. And these real, truly, I keep saying, they're our youngest customers. Parents are doing a great job. And those that enjoy the remote, they can stay there. There's others that our teachers will say it's very difficult having five and six and seven-year-olds all sitting there. They want the students in front of them as much as possible, as soon as possible. In-person learning, I always believe, is the best factor. And what you do in-person versus what you do remote, I'm so excited to see that happen again. Our littles need it, and they need their teachers, and they trust their teachers. It's a safety zone. And the individualized and personalized learning that they can get can only help matters. So thank you for asking that question.
And two more, two more, real quick.
Okay.
We will have the transportation to implement this full hybrid. I know there was talk on the funding being on the city side, so I just didn't know if we had come to some sort of agreement with them that we would be able to fully transport all of those students.
So we were sent schedules today, which I will send over to the city side for approval, which I'll need an immediate response because it does take a good two to three weeks. The tiers and the times, because we share buses on different routes, there will be adjustments to the start time and the end time. But right now, they're telling us that they can work with us. I just want to make sure that the city side is fully aware. It's not a decision we can make lightly. So I will be forwarding that tomorrow morning.
And then lastly, which is definitely a more, I would say, a harder question to answer, I would think. Obviously, numbers in Massachusetts are rising on a daily basis, and Lemonster is doing, and in the past two weeks. But what are our health metrics? I know it was included. There's not anything that's super specific in our packet on what were to happen if there were to be an active COVID case of whether it's a student or whether it's a staff member. But I want to make sure that if anything like that were to happen, we are ready to potentially shut down our, our district and go remotely if we have to. I know that's not the goal, of course, but just for safety purposes.
So it's really, there's two pieces. I really believe we need a community metric. I'm sure Eileen will be speaking to that later, that parents can sort of prepare of when we are going to trigger a move to a different model.
Sure.
Desi has guidance, so we know what to do if a student has it or a teacher has it. So there could be closures of a classroom or a building, and we don't have to shut down the entire school department. So all of those procedures are in place, and they're in the plan. And our lead nurse, Kathy Gardette, has done an amazing job supporting us through this. So we have outlined, the first call is as soon as we have a case, we call the Department of Education, and they start the process moving. That's as far as we can go. I would love to be Dr. Fauci, but I'm not. I'm not a scientist. So we're, we would love to have a community metric which helps us adjust. And let parents have a heads-up, you know? We see we're headed down a certain pathway. What does that signify? But otherwise, we do have procedures in place to handle whatever we are given.
So you said we'd contact Desi. I assume we'd also be contacting the local board of health as well.
Yeah, so our lead nurse has all of that in place. It's sort of the short version of what to do next. And we just go right down the list. School nurses will call our lead nurse. She'll start the chain of command, and then we will be given guidance back, whether to just have that child or that teacher, the whole class, and whatever situation might happen.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. All right, Mike?
So Sue and Isabel covered pretty much what I had. I do want to say I had quite a number of parents have written to me recently saying that they're happy with remote and want to stay that way. And I, Sue brought this up already, but I, Paula, I believe you, you talked to me a little bit about being flexible.
Yes.
According to what people need. And I'm wondering, I'm thinking it might be a good idea for you to say to everybody what you said to me.
Sure.
Because we could have, we could have 80% of our parents say they want to stay remote. We could have only 10% say they want to stay remote. So I know that you've thought about that.
Right.
You can tell us what you've thought about that.
So a few of the different scenarios are, because this could go either way. We, and I very much respect parents where they want to be. If I had a parent that said they weren't worried about this, I'd be worried. So we're all worried. So if I'm in a cohort of first-grade teachers, and I have three of us, and 20 first graders, they want to stay home, and 40 are coming in, two of our teachers could be the in-person hybrid teacher, and one could be the remote teacher. Now, based on the information I've been receiving over the last week, we could have more remote students. So say 40 students want to stay remote. We might have two of our teachers stay in a remote situation and one be in a hybrid. That's one scenario. That's why that survey is so important, as fast as we can get it. We also are hiring some virtual teachers so that even though teachers are checking in with their students in the morning, somewhere in the middle of the day and at the end, if a child has a content issue, or I just can't get through this piece, we will have virtual teachers and tutors that can support the learning. So there's all sorts of moving parts. And until we have the information, it's really hard to plan that. The other piece is families may fill out a requisition to come back into one or the other model. And we will just ask to give us some time to make some planning. So say if they're in remote and they choose to come into hybrid, they have that right. So it's a very flexible, fluid situation that we're, we're trying to accommodate everyone. So the more information we have, the better we can do this upfront so that we're not making so many changes along the way.
All right. My second point, I want to echo what Isabel was saying about, you know, the state number of cases. And we seem, we seem to be moving in the wrong direction. Today's report is out statewide. We have hit 5.4% for positivity. Guidance used to be that over 5% meant we went back to all remote. Obviously, the numbers get updated when more tests come in. Tomorrow, it could be a blip. So one concern I have is, at the moment, we're talking about approving, it feels like we're talking about approving something open-ended, right? So, you know, if things go back down a little, stabilize some, that's one thing. If they keep heading in the direction they're headed, that's another. So one thing we, I think, need to address is between, what would it look like? What would it mean that we can't do this even though we voted on it? Right, so this is the kind of thing we got to, I think we have to think about. I mean, you looked, you gave me a strange look, so maybe I'm not making sense.
No, you froze for a while. So I missed the context.
So I'll say it again. It was a very impressive presentation, you guys. Everybody has done a lot of work on setting this up. I'm worried about just saying yes, and that means we do that no matter what the state numbers do between now and when it's supposed to start. So what I'm interested in is some sort of, how do we know? What do we look at that lets us know that, hmm, things have gone the wrong way so much that even though we voted to do this, we have to back out? The guidelines that the state gave us are kind of after the fact. We get a positive test, we report it, they tell us what to do. That obviously can't happen until the kids are actually in the classroom. But there's some point at which, you know, we're hitting the kind of rate that makes me worried that we shouldn't, we should not increase the number of people in buildings.
So my only pushback on that, Michael, is if we had to close, we know we can do it.
Right.
Remote has really been a positive experience. We know it. I mean, that's going to be our snow days. How easy is that this year? We were so uncertain. This was new for all of us, and the Lemonster teachers knocked it out of the park. I mean, people, people are really enjoying their remote experience. The lessons are rich and engaging, and teachers are there all day long. So I feel better that we had the experience so that we, to roll backwards is not a problem. So, but there again, I'm a little bit of a risk-taker, and I'm saying I know what's good for kids. I just know what's good for kids.
So, I mean, I think, I guess what I'm really saying is, I really appreciated last spring your willingness to make a decision and, and go with it on what we had to do.
Yep.
So I'm going to be counting on you to keep an eye on this and be willing to say, uh-oh, if it's uh-oh. I'm really hoping it's not, but I don't like what I'm seeing in the graph.
Correct, and I would implore the board of health, the people that we have in those positions, to give us accurate reads. I feel. I feel very confident with our lead nurse, Kathy. She gives me a daily update, seven days a week. She would not let us go down a bad path. And if we have to close like we did on March 13th, we're going to close. I'm not willing to take that risk with any child or staff member. I'm just not willing. So, we're watching it day in and day out.
Good. I mean, I'll just say, the state stoplight map, the red, yellow, green that people keep talking about, the colors on that are driven by how much testing you do. Worcester tests 16 times as many people as Lemonster does. That's why they're in the red and we're in the green. Because the colors are determined by how many cases you find, not by the percent of your group that's positive. Our positivity rate is 20% higher than Worcester's. We just don't test nearly as many people. All right. I'm done.
Thanks, Michael.
All right, thank you. Peter?
So, yeah, thank you for the presentation and all the work that's gone into it. I mean, I would reiterate a lot of Mike, you know, what Michael just said. You know, the DSC guidance is basically wait till 3% of your students or you're in red for three weeks before you kind of switch back, which I think is a little, you know, more reactive than proactive. But, you know, we can talk about that more when we look at the motion. The only question I have that hasn't really been asked yet is just like the technology infrastructure. You know, there were some problems today from what I heard, at least in some, you know, some spots. And I'm sure some of those are easy to solve. But, are there concerns with, you know, the increase, the increased use of, you know, Wi-Fi and stuff like that within the buildings?
Does anybody on the team want to talk about that?
Well, I will say that we have a tremendous amount of capacity now as far as the Wi-Fi is concerned. And we are troubleshooting some of the issues that Google has. And every day, we're learning a little bit more about how to really get the most out of the Google Chromebook that we can. So, there are some glitches along the way. I do not believe that our infrastructure is a concern. It may be devices. And we also need to continue to work with our families and with our staff so that they will become the expert tech providers that we've all been asked to jump into and become. I don't know if Steve has anything more, but I do know we did a tremendous upgrade on the capacity for wireless in all of our schools.
So, I would just say thank you to Laureen. That was well stated. As with any technology rollout, we come across some bugs and we fix them and we move on to the next bug. Today was the first day for staff that was in. And a few of them reported some difficulties and the tech team worked on those. So, I think we're in a, we're in a much better place in terms of infrastructure and our capacity, as Laureen said. We had a major upgrade during the summer with our, with our internet. And so, that was planned before COVID. And it was, it was well done. And so, our, our Wi-Fi is better than it has been.
Okay. Yeah, that was the only, you know, question I had at the time to make sure there weren't anything that's arisen as we've begun to reintroduce both staff and students into the buildings.
Okay, thank you. Melissa?
Hi. Some, again, some of the questions have already been asked and answered. So, we've gotten quite a few emails, obviously, in the last few days from parents who are concerned that their, especially their youngest kids who are just transitioning back to school will have to transition teachers if they do a remote plan. I trust your judgment on that. If that's what has to happen, it has to happen. But, if there's any way we can look at trying to prevent another transition to our youngest kids, I hope we can look at it, even if it means on their Monday, Tuesday that they would have gone in, that they go in, but go in on their computer. Anything we can do to try to keep some consistency for our youngest kids? We agree with you. Yeah. The technology piece, again, I've heard from teachers today that are concerned that they're struggling now and then with classes of kids in the classroom, that they're concerned about the capacity. So, I am happy to hear that's being worked on. Let's see. Desks, I've heard is an issue in some schools that there might not actually be enough desks in classrooms. Is that something that's being worked on, I assume?
That hasn't crossed my plate, but I would address it if it did.
Okay. All right. Um, and then, yeah, good, good. Any word on anything we can do with creative choices to help with the scheduling of parents, whether it's after school or it's remote scheduling, even if we have to do it offsite? I know there's talk of remote learning sites. If we could try to work something out with them and provide more consistency with their staff? Yes.
Renee, do you want to take that?
Yeah. We are working with creative choices to do before and after school so that if their school doesn't start till 9:30, they'll be drop off as early as 7:30 and they'll be able to pick up by 4 o'clock in the afternoon. So, our schools will have the creative choices back in their, in their schools for the, for the in-person days where there will be daycare provided if needed or for before and after school.
And then, just kind of my thought too, as, as I'm working with a young child, I know there's been some pushback that it means potentially fewer hours in front of the teacher and while they're maybe, unless. It also, as a working parent, opens up some hours for me and that, that means there's some hours in the evening, potentially, I can help my son with work and classwork and projects and not be in that set nine to two hours when I'm trying to work and I'm trying to help him with projects going on. So, as I'm working with a very young child, I kind of like the idea of a little bit more flexibility that this might offer. And again, it doesn't work for all, but it will work for some, so.
So, that's a good point, Melissa. That's what we were hearing from our families of the younger students. The 211, the 212, suiting their needs a little bit. And every day, there will be contact with a teacher. And if you ever needed help from any of the virtual staff that we've had to bring on, they're there as well. So, we're, we're really going to wrap our arms around all of our students and our families. We've sat and we've listened and listened and listened, and now it's time to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dean?
I have nothing to say. Not really. First of all, no, this, 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 this is certainly a big step in the right direction. In July, remember, in July, I supported the superintendent with the A and B week. At the time, the A and B week, as you remember, and this was a little bit confusing for me because the A and B week was the one week in and the one week out, and that was recommended by the superintendent. And I'm sure things have changed since then, superintendent, that brought you to the conclusion that this is the best plan. And I'm okay with that. We're never going to make, I mean, there's never going to be a perfect situation because, as it was said, I think by Greg Thomas earlier, earlier is, it, we've, we've got to do the whole platform. It's got to be every student and what's best for all students. So, there's no way to really tailor this to the exact uniqueness that every single family has it exactly the way they want. I mean, that's just never going to be the case. So, I, I supported that. I support this. But, and, and my motion tonight will be based on the fact that to give the superintendent the flexibility to pivot and accelerate things if necessary. So, something's going well in, in a particular class section, second and third grade. And she feels that, and her team feels that it's, it's okay without the permission of the school committee, that we could advance that, move it up a week, move it. This is what's going well. This isn't going so well. You know, I had recommended the DSC, you know, a platform of best practices where we can share these ideas. Because I've heard some great ideas. We've had some great ideas we could share with other school systems and vice versa. And this, best practices in every application of life, in, in every, you know, you know, in, in every job that all of us do. And, you know, we all use them. Isn't Pinterest just a big sharing of, of information and ideas? And I look at that in the same way in education. So, I, I, this is a huge step in the right direction. Again, I supported the superintendent back in July. And I, and I realized that there were some members of the committee, I think Mike is definitely concerned with the health and well-being, meaning, you know, what happens, right, with all of this? And, and I, I think, let's go back to what committee member Paul said at the very beginning is what is the criteria by which we would close schools? And again, you saw DSC has some. Our insurance company has sort of weighed in on this. But, then we also need that criteria so that everyone can follow along at home as to how will we open or close or slow down or move things quicker? Just as important so people know what it is that we're using as, as the criteria. So, my motion would be to, to support the superintendent's recommendation and, and, but also to leave that in there. And I think they need the flexibility to be able to pivot when necessary. If it means moving things up, then it means moving things up. If it means slowing things down a little bit. I think that, what, I think there's a little bit of a standoff. The superintendent put out the survey and the survey wasn't filled out because people wanted to wait till this meeting. But, the survey is very important because it's kind of like planning for any event or wedding or anything. We need to know how many students are happy. And I've said from the past, in the past, and I say it right along, if you're doing well with remote learning and you're happy with it, I think everyone can agree, leave it alone. And then, for those students, again, who, and I think we've heard those voices of those students that can't learn remotely, have tried, they've exhausted everything. They can't. And those students that are home alone with, with no supervision and shouldn't be. And so, with, with that motion to support the superintendent's plan, which also, I think, gives her the opportunity that if she feels that it should be an A and a B week, then we go with the A and B week. But, we've got to be able to provide that flexibility and not have to come back to the school committee every time they make another change, unless it's, unless it's substantial. So, my motion would be to approve it. Yes.
Can I just have you hold off on your motion for just like two minutes? Because Brandon still needs to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Damon.
Ask myself, and then we'll let you make the motion.
So, that, it doesn't matter who makes the motion. I, I thought I was last. And, and so, that's all. I mean, I think it's the most important part of this, A, B. I mean, not everything's going to suit everybody, but I think getting kids back into the classroom as fast as they can, especially those having a difficult time learning. And then, if it progresses to three days a week and that, that flexibility to be able to pivot to more days or more hours, if there has to be done more hours, then that flexibility is provided.
All right. Thank you, Dean. Brandon?
Yeah, thank you. First, let me thank all of you guys for the hard work that you've been doing, that you continue to do. I totally understand that this has not been an easy task and I thank you a thousand times for everything you guys are doing. One of my biggest questions after touring Fallbrook this afternoon was with the accelerated plan. And I'm glad to hear the superintendent say that Butch is ready to, to get the classrooms back together because while I was there, I had the feeling that there was still a lot of work to be done. So, with his help and the janitors at, you know, the elementary schools, I definitely think it's, it will be done in time. The second concern I have that I heard from a lot of parents since the plan was kind of released was the, the feeling that there may be less direct instruction time with the two remote days. I just think that the more we can do to reassure people that it's not going to be like it was in the fall because that's kind of what I heard today was, I'm worried that we're going to slip down that path and it's going to be like the fall again. I don't know, superintendent, if you want to.
Look what we did with remote. That was the biggest thing we fought when everyone said, oh, it's going to look like the spring. It's going to look like the spring. I knew it wasn't going to look like the spring. And once again, the big word for me is trust. If I trust, if you can trust me, I can trust you. I am saying that the two remote days will not look like the spring. Trust me.
Absolutely. Thank you. And then, the last thing was in regard to transportation. And you spoke to Isabel on that already. And just making sure that we have the funds we need to make that happen so every kid who needs to ride the bus can get to school. So, thank you.
Right. And we need to keep that consistent information going over to the city. They don't need to hear about it, you know, in June. They need to know what's going on as often as possible.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. I was just going to, everybody asked a lot of great questions. I wanted to compliment everyone for their presentation. All the teachers and all the support staff and custodians have done a phenomenal job. I've heard many, 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 many praises to the quality of education our students have been receiving thus far. I do want to just clarify. I know we were talking a lot about A through L and M through Z. But, there are many families that have multiple last names or foster homes that may have children with multiple last names. And it's my understanding that all those students would all have the same schedule regardless of their last name so that everyone in the same household would be going to school on the same days and learning remotely on the same, same days. So, there's no issues around scheduling.
Correct. Families are taking a priority. And if there's a hardship, we're just asking that families reach out to the principal so they know that. The A to L to M to Z is really just a starting point for us. We understand that there are many complex issues and so, each building is dealing with it directly.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that message got out there so there would be no concerns. All right. Well, having everyone asking wonderful questions, Dean, would you like to make a motion?
I don't care who makes the motion. I just want to make sure we provide the flexibility. And that is, I, I don't want to be having a meeting every time we're going to be, you know, adding or subtracting to this unless it's a substantive change. So, my motion would be to approve it and would, and give the administration the flexibility they need. And if, secondly, it's going well, as I illustrated, then fine, add more days, whatever's necessary. That would be my motion.
Okay.
One second.
I'll second it.
And that be a matrix entering school by which we would sort of, you know, we establish some sort of a matrix in, out. So, what would we do to close and what we do to sort of open so that we can kind of follow along.
Right. I think we're going to address the matrix a little later on, Dean, but we definitely are going to address the matrix issue. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? I'm going to do a voice vote.
Eileen, just, yeah, no, no problem. So, the, the matrix that we're going to address. What is that?
You froze a little, so can you repeat it?
So, the, the matrix that we're going to address, that will include kind of our, you know, when we would switch back to remote if we needed to and, you know, when we would go back to a hybrid in the future, assuming, you know, we spike and then come back down. Is that correct?
That's what I'm hoping that we will develop, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Was there any other questions or discussions?
My only question was to piggyback on what Michael was saying about what came out this afternoon, the, the COVID statistics. As he was saying, we're only, we're only about three or four more from going from green to red, you know? And, well, Paula, you can address that. Can you hear me, Paula, or am I?
Yeah. Yeah, no, I can hear.
So, I, I, I would just ask that, you know, when all of a sudden, in conjunction with the Board of Health, if we start going from green to red because of a spike or a cluster or whatever you want to fill in the blanks.
Correct.
From Dean's perspective regarding this, this motion he's making, you're not going to have to come to us or email us and tell us that, you know, things are not, not going well now. We have to go back to, back to the drawing board. You're just going to do it, correct? Is that what the motion is about, Eileen?
And I will notify you like I currently do.
Right.
And we would obviously need to be notified, but I think what Dean was trying to say is that we, there'll be some flexibility and we'll have some guidelines so that the superintendent can work within those frameworks. So, we don't always have Um, so we don't always have to come back, you know, for every-
Right, in conjunction with the Board of Health and, uh, the stuff that comes down from the state.
Yep.
And is that right, Mike?
That's how I understand it. And so that's why I, I raised my hand to second the motion. I don't know if I was the first person to do that or not, but I, I actually suggested a month ago, I asked, can't, maybe we should, um, have something to give Paula some more flexibility. So I'm happy to include that, but we do, we have to, we do need to get together and develop a clearer picture of what those metrics are. But I, I trust that we can vote this tonight and do that after.
I agree.
All right. I'm going to do a, a voice vote.
Uh, can I add one more thing? So I, I just want to say, you know, overall, I'm not thrilled about the hybrid plan. Um, but I do intend on supporting the motion, um, just because, uh, you know, those who want to stay remote can remain remote. And the remote learning that they'll be having is basically exactly what they have right now. And if you do choose to go into the hybrid program, you can switch back out at a later date. It, you know, there might be a little bit of a delay as things get moved around, but you can always switch back out. So for the members of the public listening, you know, I'm, I'm not thrilled with the, the hybrid. Um, you know, I appreciate the time that's gone into it. Um, but for those who want to go remote, you, it will still be there as an option the way it currently is.
Correct. Okay. Is any other comments before we go for a vote? It's going to be a voice vote, Ron?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. I know, um, people deliberated and thought, uh, very carefully, um, about this plan. Um, we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes for September 8th, 2020, obviously.
Eileen, didn't Paula, can Paula hear, can Paula hear me? Didn't you, uh, Eileen, I'm, I mean, Paul, didn't you say you wanted to have another vote on the accelerated?
Take it there.
You're just going in a different batch?
Well, I think the way that we just voted, we agreed to the hybrid and to give the superintendent flexibility-
Okay, all right.
Around the timeframe. So I, it's my understanding, the way the vote was, that it included pieces. Um, if people disagree with me, please say so now.
That was my understanding.
That, that was my understanding. We had come to both votes together.
All right.
Okay.
I just want to move on to translation as well.
Yep, absolutely. Thanks for clarifying, Ron. Um, so approval of the minutes, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes, uh, September 8th, 2020.
Thank you. Second, please?
I'll second.
Brandon seconded. Is there any, uh, missions, errors, corrections that need to be made?
My second and third page were reversed. That confused me for a moment, but I think it's probably just the way my packet was assembled.
Okay. Yes, they were reversed, yeah. So, okay. Um, all those in favor, I'm going to do a voice vote again. Ron?
Yay.
Sue? Okay. Isabel?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay. All right, we're going to move on to subcommittee reports, finance subcommittee.
Yes, finances met twice. Uh, we have some warrants to approve, so I'll start with those. Um, finance committee has reviewed and approved the following warrants. From the general fund, warrant number 10 totaling $234,595.49. Warrant 11 totaling $1,861,284.59. Warrant 12 totaling $197,267.51. Warrant 13 totaling $2,202,624.01. Um, grants and revolving, I'm just, let me say that again. From grants and revolving funds, we have, again, warrants 10 through 13. Warrant 10 in the amount of $94,856.66. Warrant 11 totaling $137,201.45. Warrant 12 totaling $25,698.89. And warrant 13 totaling $413,665.42. These have been reviewed, reviewed and approved by finance, so I move that we approve these warrants as read.
Do I have a second? Sue, seconding? Sue, you're on mute.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any, um, questions, comments, discussions? If not, I'm going to do a voice vote. Ron?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Dean? Brandon?
Yay.
Dean? Are you still with us to vote? Not sure if we lost Dean. I don't, I see him still on, but not his picture. Um, I'll be a yay.
Okay.
So at this point, a motion carries, um, eight to zero, um, eight to zero because, um, Dean was not able to vote.
Um, we also-
Dean, there you are.
Yep.
Dean, we were just having, um, the motion to, uh, vote on the approval of the warrants. Are you? Thank you.
Yay.
Excellent. Okay, motion carries. Go ahead, Mike.
We, we also reviewed and approv- and, uh, approved our finance subcommittee meeting minutes from September 8th, 2020. Um, so I would move that we approve those as well.
Do I have a second? Sue? Um, all those in, in favor, again, a voice vote. Ron?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay. Okay, motion carries. Go ahead, Michael.
Um, and lastly, we have been looking into, um, reviewing the finances and trying to provide documents to explain them. You have, uh, the full school committee packet had the original draft version from last Thursday. Um, you should have received an updated, improved version. But, uh, we are, finance will be meeting again next Thursday at 6:00 to try to further improve, uh, our reporting of the state of things. Uh, the most important thing we did though is, uh, Melanie and Paula assured us, showed us the breakdown that, um, we do have sufficient funding barely to, um, pay for the plan we just approved. So the, the increase, going to the full hybrid as proposed is within the budget. As long as something else doesn't go wrong. So that's, I think that's all I need to particularly report, although if anybody has anything to bring up.
Go ahead, Sue. Mike, you might want to ask the mayor about the transportation piece. Is that appropriate now or what?
Well, Isabel brought that up when we were discussing the plan. So, I mean, we can bring it up again. Um, certainly in order to do the transportation for the hybrid plan we just voted on, buses are going to start having to pick up people. We're going to have to pay for that. Um, so we just want to make sure that the city is aware of that need coming. I know there's been some back and forth between city and the bus companies about, um, past, so, um, Dean, you're muted.
No, we didn't have any issues in the past other than they didn't, they didn't provide transportation for the students because we were out. So that's between the school department and, you know, them and trying to work out something reasonable. But, yeah, I mean, we just need to know, I, I think we can meet with the offline superintendent about exactly, are they expecting to spend more? I know that some of the buses haven't been very, you know, there've been one or two students heading up to the high school. So, um, you know, we can talk all about that. I expect that there'll be more students on there or maybe we'll go to smaller vans, maybe is that less expensive? But, yeah, I mean, obviously, we're going to have to transport those students. Yeah.
I believe the superintendent said that she has, uh, the, the details will be sent over tomorrow, so-
All right, good.
As long as everybody's communicating and on the same page, we-
We'll be waiting. We'll be waiting.
And again, that's why it's so important for parents to fill out that survey so we know how many students actually need to be transported.
Absolutely. We need to know how many are, are going to continue with remote and how many are going to need transportation? How many parents are going to transport there? From other school systems, from what I've heard, a lot of pa- more parents than ever have been transporting their students.
Correct.
If they can.
Yep.
That's what I've heard.
And we have to keep in mind, the guidelines provided by the state dramatically decrease the number of students per bus because they want the, the distancing on the buses. So we can't pack them in the way we have done in the past. The hybrid helps with that because we only have half, we don't have the full amount going every day. Um, but hybrid is half the students per day and the guidelines are a third the students per bus. So I'm sure that's all that's, lot, there's a lot of time that's been spent on that. But just so people know, like, that's, that's the logistical task that they're dealing with is trying to get half the students there with a third of the students per bus.
Okay, thank you. If nobody else has anything, we'll move on. Um, the next item is the policy subcommittee. Is there anything to report, Ron?
Uh, am I muted? No, no, there's nothing to report on the policy. There was no meeting today or, I'm not sure when, when the-
It'll be at our next, like, before our next meeting.
That will be October-
Nineteenth.
October 19th, okay.
All right, thank you. Um, so now we're going to action items, acceptance of gifts, superintendent? Yes, we have been receiving, uh, we've had an outpouring of donations from all over. And this past week, we were given donations from AIS, the manufacturing company. And so we want to be able to accept those gifts. We had a teacher who accepted, um, a donation from Staples. It just keeps coming. Our community has been, um, pouring out the support for our students in our buildings. So I would like to have your approval to accept these gifts.
Right, and there was one from Burlington as well?
Yeah, that was a $1,200 one too for a staff member, so yes. So, um- Sue made- To access, accept these gifts with a thank you, a generous thank you from the Westminster School Committee? Or Westminster, Brandon is seconding it?
Could I just, um, could I just say, uh, make a comment?
Sure.
Um, this is tens of thousands of dollars of a donation. In the past, we used to send handwritten thank you cards signed by the entire committee. And I don't know if we've done that in a while and maybe because of COVID we haven't. But I think it's, even if it takes a little extra time, um, I, I think it's, it's, uh, it, it makes a statement when each one of us signs off, um, thanking them for, for their donation. However, large or small that donation might be, so that would be mine.
I'll put one together and see if I can send it around to all of you.
You know, you can have electronic signatures.
No, I want your signature.
Well, I'm just saying, if you wanted to make it go faster, you know? Just sign it with your, all you do, just sign it with your finger.
Yeah. Well, my signature doesn't look so great that way, but, um, it's a great suggestion. Thank you. Um, so obviously, um, we appreciate everyone's generosity. We have a, a motion and a second. Um, of course, it's going to be a voice vote since we're, uh, working remotely. Ron?
Yay.
Sue? Yay. Isabel?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Dean?
Yeah, yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
And I'm a yay. Thank you. Um, our next, uh, we're moving into surplus equip- uh, equipment, superintendent? This is the same as we did at Sainsbury's. We had those oversized TVs that are very obtrusive into the classroom. And, uh, as we're trying to make more and more space, we need to, they don't work, we don't use them. Um, consider them obsolete as well, so I need a vote in support of that. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll second it.
Melissa, Melissa raised her hand first. Um, second?
I'll second it.
Hi, Ron? Any discussion? Okay, it's going to be a voice vote. Ron?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
All right, and I'm a yay as well. Okay, thank you. Now we're going on to new and old business. We have an HR report. Uh, it's just informational, just keeping everybody updated where we're at and where we're moving forward to. We have open positions and filled positions as well in that. Okay, thank you. And I know we've discussed some of those positions already in today's meeting. Yes, we have. Um, so next comes to district enrollment. Um, we continue to enroll every single day, so it's just our weekly update for you. Uh, we're climbing. Our kindergarten is coming back, which we are very appreciative of. We need our little, littlest guys as soon as possible, so we are growing every day. Great, thank you. Um, comparison staffing report? Yes, um, just letting everyone know where we were, where we currently are sitting with remote and where we're headed for hybrid. Just another update of where our staffing lists are. Thank you. Um, we're going into, um, the mayor's petition.
So I think based on, um, based on tonight's, uh, action, we, I, I think the original petition was signed for the A and B week, which was what the superintendent first proposed in July. But I think, I think most are comfortable in looking at this as a step in the right direction and the fact that the superintendent has the flex- flexibility, um, to move faster in some areas. As she's already said, she's going to move quicker, so I think we can leave, give that leave to the draw.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next is the, um, request from the mayor for a help matrix and criteria. And what I would like to propose is for us to establish, um, sort of a, uh, subcommittee work group um, that includes Kathy, uh, Barrett, the, um, lead nurse, includes the Department of, um, Public Health. Um, and, you know, it probably makes sense to include, um, you know, one or two teachers and one or two parents. Um, and obviously, um, some, uh, school committee members so that we can make a thorough and comprehensive plan that is well thought out. Um, not based on anybody's, um, personal needs, but, you know, as much facts as we can get. Um, some of the things that, um, you know, in talking to, um, some other districts, um, just because somebody moves into, say, a red category, if it's spiked because it's in a nursing home, that doesn't necessarily impact, you know, students in, um, our school system. So I would want to be very cautious about, you know, not so much black and white. Um, we do need to have a framework and a criteria, but we also need to be cognizant, you know, of what the cause and effect is and how that actually impacts, um, students and teachers and staff, um, in the school system. Um, I know, you know, there's been college kids who live out of state and going to school out of state who've, you know, tested positive and that reflects back to their hometowns. That obviously doesn't necessarily impact, um, you know, safety rates, uh, for us. So I just, um, throw those out as, you know, just examples of when we're, we're doing things.
I'm comfortable with that.
Dean, you're freezing. Can you repeat that?
Um, I'm, uh, I'm comfortable with that. Am I still muted?
No, you can, we can hear you now.
So I'm comfortable with that and I know that our health director would be glad to serve on such a committee. But I do think we need to be able to communicate that and have this out of our policy. And, um, I think everyone would be served better by that. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so, um, I know I've, uh, is anybody in the committee, um, interested in serving on that?
I am.
We have Ron and Mike and Peter? And Paula should be on the committee, um, but just not as part of the school committee. Um, so we've got Mike, Peter and Ron. Okay, great. Um, so we can, um, maybe, uh, reach out, um, any parents who are listening to this?
Somebody wants-
Sorry, Mike.
Pets want to be represented. Pets want to be re- represented on this, on, yeah, we forgot about them, right?
So I apologize about that. Um, but in any case, um, it's been, I guess, a long meeting and they're getting frisky here. Um, if anybody, if there are any parents or teachers, um, or, you know, staff out there who would like to be on the committee, um, if you can please, uh, forward your intention to, um, Chris Silverman. Um, and then we can, you know, form a committee. Um, and, you know, I think it's something that will be labor intensive- Um, and, you know, I think it's something that will be labor-intensive initially, because we do need to get this information, you know, out, so we need people who have the ability to, you know, meet at least, you know, a few times in, you know, pretty close proximity. Okay?
And then this will go back to the policy committee.
Yeah. Yes, but I do want, um, obviously, and Ron is the chair of the policy committee, um, and it will have to come back and we'll put it in policy, but we need to come up with, you know, some recommendations, um, and, you know, obviously gather maybe some information that other districts are using, um, as well, so we're not always inventing the wheel. But, uh, we need to do what's right for Lemonster. Uh, Ron?
Should we also ask MASC for some guidance on this? No? Yes?
I mean, that's something we certainly can do, and that's, you know, would be under the purview of the, um, probably the work, uh, subcommittee. But certainly, I'm open to input from anybody. Um, and we really need to deal with, you know, sort of facts, so. Alright, um, any other, um, new or old business, Sue, and then Dean?
So this question is probably Dean for you. Um, I guess there's a second round of CARES Act money. Um, and are we eligible for that? Did we receive all the money we were entitled to with the first round? Or are we entitled to part of the second round, you know?
So, the way they did the CARES Act is they made it so that, um, the, uh, certain funds would go to the school department, and then certain funds to the city. Certain funds from the city can't, can't, can't be shared, they, they just built that wall in, in place, and then there are other funds that could. The second round, I think Wendy's here right now, um, is, is that the CDBG, or is that a separate piece of this? Right, so there's, so there's a, um, a, another round of it that, um, what's the total on it? I mean, it's.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, one, round one, Sue, is what we spent for the Chromebooks. That's the, that's the money the, that we bought all those, uh, Chromebooks.
But the city is entitled to another round, that's the question. Yes?
Supposedly another round. I saw the, uh, congressman today, and supposedly there, there's another round coming.
Right, so he just sent out a letter, September thirtieth, and it says, um, they're opening up the application process, October first through October thirtieth?
Mm-hmm.
But this one has, this one's pretty good. It has a lot of detail in it as to what, you know, we can use it for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's all COVID, but, but I think it's beneficial. So we can expect money under this?
Oh, that's, that's the plan.
Okay, perfect, 'cause it, it says it will cover unemployment costs?
That's another, no, that's not the one that we have. That's another round, too.
How much money?
Well, unemployment costs related to COVID. It's all COVID-related, but unemployment costs related to COVID, no?
Yeah, we'll have to check it out. Yeah, like I said, there's, there's what you can use.
I'll send you this, but if you could, you know, this would really be helpful to the school system, too.
There's, there's what you can use, the COVID money for, for the schools, and then some, so that, some, some aren't interchangeable.
Right. Right, but we are getting more, which is a good thing.
Yes, send that to me, please.
Yeah, okay. That's it. Thank you.
Dean, you have something?
Yes, so this is something that we can look at down the road, and this isn't, it, it meant at all as a, as, as a, uh, a negative. But, um, one of the things that maybe for policy to look at down the road is, establish a policy so that we make sure that we go out to, um, advertise for, for all positions. And I know at Mass, uh, we just did this, it's pretty extensive, across-the-board, um, evaluation and survey with all employees. And one of the biggest gripes that they had, honestly, one of the things that was surprising is that, um, jobs weren't always advertised. And I'm not saying we don't, but even on the city side, we're kinda taking another look at that to make sure of that. And one of the gripes was that sometimes there'd be an, an interim job, so somebody leaves suddenly. And after they leave, there's, um, somebody that's like, perfect for the job, next person in line. And then subsequently, three, four, five, six months later, a person is put into that position without it being advertised. And that was a bone of contention with employees, because they felt at least an interview process internally, for those that might have been interested, so. Uh, I guess my suggestion is for policy, whenever, I know everybody's busy right now, is that we, uh, revisit any policies that we currently have, and then put something out there so that the public understands that we're gonna advertise our policies to advertise for each and every job we got.
Okay, thank you. We can refer that to the Policy Subcommittee. Um, anything else? Uh, Ron?
Yeah, I, oh, go ahead, Melissa, you were ahead of me.
Oh, just a quick note of excitement from the Bert side of the family, that, um, sports have started, but also theater at the high school is starting remotely on Wednesday, so wanna share that, that good news. Um, and I think that's being held by Zoom, so I hope the school is advertising it for sports, and if not, I'm sure they will. Um, and then also, um, as a new member who not too long ago was on the other side of the seat, in kind of the parent advocacy, advocacy spot, um, I'm really happy to see so many, uh, parents participating and speaking up for, and, um, I hope that continues. I know there's, um, a need and a want for that right now, but I also know that there's many times I was the sole person in the seat, and I wanna see the advocacy continue, um, so that we are really working on creating a budget plan that meets our needs, and not a, um, not reacting to what our budget is. So, um, I hope I continue to see faces either here over Zoom, or hopefully one day in person. So, thank you.
Ron?
Yeah, I, uh, I'd like to go to the delegate assembly at MA, for MASC, it's November seventh, I believe. I almost filled out the, filled it out, but, you know, I'm throwing it out there, in case somebody wants to go instead of me. It's online.
Sue, um, I'm glad you brought that up, Ron. I was gonna bring it up.
I nominate Ron.
I second that motion.
'Cause he's already near the beach. Don't they usually have it down there, the, the ocean?
They're not having it at Hyannis. It's all gonna be online.
Well, you're already there.
No.
See, you think about your background, so, yeah.
No, Dean, that's the background, you see, that's, that's a, either a gunk with.
I don't know, I don't believe in that. I think you're there right now.
So, I, yes, I'm happy to have you continue as our delegate representative. Um, I think on the next, um, school committee meeting, we should put, um, that on the agenda, if there's any resolutions for us to, um, review and approve.
Alright, I'll let you know. I'll fill out the thing tonight or tomorrow morning, and it's all gonna be online.
Yes, and I, they were talking about having workshops online as well.
Yeah, yeah.
I have not really, um, seen that yet.
I have. They've got about, they've got about eight workshops, and it's all gonna, because they crossed off for Hyannis, and it's all gonna be online.
Sure, I understand that. So, I don't know whether there's anybody else who wants to take advantage of any of that, but I'm sure they're still charging us, Chris?
No, it's not gonna cost anything this year.
Oh, it's gonna be free?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's always nice. Um, so again, um, as people are interested in that, um, I would, you know, strongly urge you to take advantage of it. It was a great experience in person, so hopefully, um, virtually, it will also be valuable to everyone. Anybody else have anything they wanna say or add? Alright, can I have a motion adjourned? Do I have a second?
As a public?
Alright.
As a, as a parent, can I say one thing?
Sure.
Alright, this is Matthew Fowler. Uh, I, I had some remarks in the beginning. I know there's a lot of speaking about money, and I, I, I'm sorry.
Uh, you know what, and I apologize, I couldn't see who was speaking, and unfortunately, we can't have people from the public address book at this point in our meeting.
Oh, understood, I'm sorry.
And so we can, uh, we can formally adjourn, and then if, you know, anybody wants to stay on and listen, they certainly can, but I do apologize, um, because I couldn't. A lot going on on the screen.
Understood.
So I apologize about that. Um, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Um, Ron?
Yay, yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
And Brandon?
Yay.
And I'm a yay. Okay, the motion is officially, uh, the motion is approved, and we're officially adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support, everyone.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak now?
Do you wanna say something?
Oh, yes, um, sorry, thank you. Um, so we talked, a lot talked about money and everything. Uh, during the meeting, I composed an email to Paula Deacon with some information regarding her and, and, uh, Ms. Sepola. And I, I hope it helps the city get some money. Like I spoke in my opening comments about Find Mess Money, and I like, it's nice that six businesses and maybe people donated the gifts, uh, as it was. I hope we can get information out to the public. If they go find money that's due to them, where can we donate? I would love to know. I'd love to, the public to know, and get all that information to the city. Matt?
Yes.
Yes, just so you know, there is a donation account that I established, uh, and it's out of the treasurer's office, and anybody can make a donation to the school department.
Okay, also, including Mr. Nazarella, is, um, if you do that Find Mess Money, which I, hopefully, everyone here has done, uh, Punchen, last name Lemister, City Lemister, the city itself is on there. So.
Well, I'll be going after that money, believe me. I'll be, I'm on the phone, I want them, show me the money.
Uh, the, the hospital's on there, many businesses are on there, so everybody, please donate to the schools, and again, thank you for your time.
Alright.
Thank you very much.